Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, this evening, I would like to thank Ms. Crystal Hudson for taking over for Amanda Buchanan, who has an emergency in her family. Okay, I need approval of agenda with a motion, a second, and a vote. All those in favor? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposition? No, thank you. Okay, we are going to have a report from our newest member of the Board of Education, Ms. Madeline Washington. Thank you for coming. Let's hear from what's going on at the high school.
Thank you for your patience with us tonight.
Alright, good evening, members of the board, staff, parents, and students. I'm Madeline Washington, the senior rep for the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and today I will be presenting you with the results of Farmington High School's first RSVP summit of the school year. So, Raising Student Voices and Participation, or RSVP, is a program at FHS spearheaded by Dr. Brian Reeves that seeks to gain student perspective on issues that kids face on a daily basis. So using this program, we were actually able to gain important information about how we can improve Farmington schools. But before I begin, I'd like to play a short video made by a senior member of Black Knight Television Program, Michael Whitaker, that explains the SSAC and RSVP in greater detail.
We believe student voice matters. That's why we created the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, or SSAC. It's a direct line between students and administration where ideas, concerns, and solutions are shared to help shape the future of our district. SSAC is about listening, learning, and leading together.
One way we gather student feedback is through RSVP. Raising Student Voices and Participation. At FHS, student reps visit classrooms to hear what's working and what needs improvement. It's not just a survey, it's a conversation. RSVP helps us understand your experience so we can make real change. Our first RSVP summit will be held on Wednesday, November 5th during seminar.
The goal of both SSAC and RSVP is simple, to make every voice across the Farmington School District heard. Whether you're in kindergarten or high school, your perspective matters. We're working to improve communication, ease transitions between schools, and build a stronger, more connected community. Now we need you. When you see a survey, fill it out. Surveys will be sent out by email or Google Classroom, so keep an eye out. When RSVP comes to your class, speak up. Your voice is powerful and it's how we make progress. Get involved, share your thoughts, and help us build the future of Farmington schools.
Together, we're building one community. Whether it's through SSAC, or RSVP, or simply speaking up, we're showing what it means to live the nightway. I'm proud to be a part of this movement, and I hope you'll join us. Alright, so on Wednesday, November 5th, Farmington High School conducted its first summit of the school year. So student reps were sent into classrooms to discuss with students some of the changes they'd like to see within the building and within the district. Reps recorded many amazing ideas from students that were reported back to our leadership team. That consisted of members of NHS, and also Dr. Lamont, and our chapter advisors. So as a team, we were able to put each of the problems that students gave us into 11 major categories. Each of these categories represents student ideas and opinions, and the changes they'd like to see. So these categories and ideas were both cost-efficient and safe, but also beneficial to our students and achievable with hard work, determination, and perspective. So today, I will be presenting the top three. The first was cleanliness and maintenance. So students expressed wanting some hooks on the back of stall doors so their bags can stay clean whenever they're going to the bathroom. They also suggested having an air freshener day or a school-wide de-cleaning effort sponsored by several different clubs and organizations at the high school. They also talked about filling in gaps in the stall doors just to ensure privacy. They also discussed repainting parking lines to cut down on confusion for new drivers at the high school. Our second category was accessibility and safety communication. So having short presentations after each of our drills so that students know the purpose of each procedure and the importance of our processes for safety. They also discussed ensuring that every classroom has a designated calm area with sensory items, a quiet space for kids where they can relax. This also helps our students with attention deficit disorders as well. Our third category is technology. So students expressed wanting more digital citizenship education so they can learn about the threats the internet poses. Along with that, they'd like to learn about how to use artificial intelligence properly, using it to build study methods, brainstorming, and project building. Third, they would like to have badges for students to use when signing in and out of the building for A+ and mat travel, also when getting school lunch versus putting in their key every single time. It just saves time and cuts down on the line. And lastly, they would like to have more Chromebooks at each attendance window so that it can make it easier to sign in and out and again, cut down on the lines. So when we look at the data, some of the most pressing issues were cleanliness, maintenance, cafeteria organization, and overall campus culture. So with every category, there are some amazing student responses that we can use to help improve our mission on Farmington schools. In the next summit that we're going to conduct, we are going to work with students to brainstorm solutions to these problem areas. So in conclusion, our leadership team and student reps have done an amazing job with gathering student feedback and recording this data. I would like to thank Mrs. Kehoe, our NHS National Honor Society and RSVP chapter advisor. I would also like to thank Mrs. Christie Scott, our librarian and associate chapter advisor, and Dr. Lamont, our principal at FHS, for all of their hard work and dedication to this experience, even with their busy schedules. I would also like to thank our student reps, and I would like to thank our leadership team for being brave enough to step up and guide our students through this process to help us make some real change. Thank you for listening.
Okay, now we have consideration and approval of minutes. Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me out there? Yes? No? Okay, oh, sorry. Alright, now I know you can hear me. Okay, consideration and approval of minutes of the October 28th regular board meeting. Motion, second, and a vote. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Now we move on to the communications portion of our meeting, and we have Jamie Sutherland here with us from Roosevelt.
Hello, thank you for having us. So I am honored to be representing Roosevelt Elementary tonight. So we're going to start with our student voices. I am joined by members of Roosevelt's Character Council to highlight our monthly character assemblies and the hard work that they and their supporting teachers put into preparing for these assemblies. So we're going to start by having the students introduce themselves.
I'm Nash.
I'm Cadence.
I'm Cece.
I'm Charlotte.
I'm Natalie.
I am also Charlotte.
I'm Evelyn.
I'm Myles.
I'm Kylie.
I'm Mary.
I'm Koda.
I'm Charlie.
I'm Jen.
Alright, so each month, we use the SHARE acronym and characteristics from Portrait of a Graduate to focus on a monthly character trait. During the assembly, the building unites by reciting the Roosevelt chant, connects during our Power of Yet song and dance, and commits to a character word. Throughout the day, we continue to reward grade levels that demonstrate strong character to determine the winner at the end of the day. The video will give you a glimpse into the excitement that these assemblies bring to our building. Alright, so next, we have some Character Council members that are going to share some additional information regarding the preparation and what their favorite part of the assembly is.
So my question was, what do you do to prep for the character assemblies the day before? What we'll do is we'll work on banners that we hang up in the cafeteria, and then we'll practice the dance we do in the assemblies.
We also report to the gym early to set up for the games and make a tunnel for the students as they are coming in.
My favorite part is, um... One of the games.
My favorite part is doing our school chant with the rest of the school.
My favorite part is doing the dance with the rest of the Character Council.
I really like to sing and dance with the whole school. It's really fun.
Alright, so now we're going to have them go ahead and go around, and you guys can shake the hands of the board members. Alright, so next, we're going to move into our featured teacher, Ms. Misty Thomas. It is my pleasure to recognize Roosevelt's featured teacher, Mrs. Misty Thomas. Misty is not the most vocal person in the room, but she is an example of the steady presence every school relies on. Misty shows up each day with humility, professionalism, and a commitment to students, colleagues, and our entire school community. Her continuous reflection and growth naturally elevate those around her. She is someone who never stops giving, never stops learning, and never stops believing in others. She brings calm to chaos, building confidence in students, and quietly transforming classrooms. Her students thrive because she believes in them. She has the same positive effect on her colleagues as well. Teachers become stronger and more confident through her guidance, her thoughtful insight, and her willingness to share effective strategies. Misty is someone who leads both students and staff with excellence, empathy, and purpose without ever seeking the spotlight. So tonight, we are going to give her that spotlight that she deserves by recognizing her for her achievements and positive impact that she has had on Roosevelt Elementary. Congratulations, Mrs. Thomas. Alright, so next, we have our Heartland Hero, and we are recognizing Triple Creek Realty. So it is my honor to recognize a partner who has become an essential part of Roosevelt's school community. Someone who shows up not for recognition but because they want to support our students and families within the community they serve. Tonight, we are proud to present our Heartland Hero Award to Triple Creek Realty. They are the steady, reliable support behind our family events, always willing, always present, and always committed. So far this year, they have sponsored a hayride at our Fall Family Night, decorated a trunk for our trunk-or-treat, but most importantly, simply showing up and interacting with our families with warmth and enthusiasm. They have helped us turn simple events into memorable experiences for our students, families, and staff. We want to thank Triple Creek for the joy you bring, the support you provide, and the difference that you make. We are extremely grateful for your partnership and generosity.
Alright, Mr. Mills. Front and center. With recognition for athletes and activities.
We have eight fall sports teams that participate in the fall, and we'll be recognizing members from three of those teams this evening, and then we'll recognize the rest of them in the December meeting. We're going to get this night of recognition started with Coach Baker and Molly.
Hello, everybody. Our program as a whole had a great year of growth and development. Our girls started preparing in February with our offseason training program. They continued to show up and give us everything they had until our season ended in late October, so they go year-round almost. Our freshman girls finished 10 and 3, and our JV finished 12 and 3. Varsity finished the season 22, 8, and 1. Our program knew that this season was going to be a rebuilding year. We were pretty young. We also lost seven seniors last year. As a coach, I am so proud of the way that our team bought in and improved every practice and every game. We ask a lot of these girls, and they always show up and work hard. This is our program's fifth season in a row. We have finished with 20-plus wins, and our program continues to reload every year and have a fully-staffed freshman JV and varsity roster. The girls, the coaching staff, and I want to say thank you as always for coming out to our game and cheering us on. And a big thank you to Mr. Jeff Lawson, who always volunteers his time to work our scorer's table, and we couldn't imagine a game without him there. And also a huge thank you to Chad Mills for being incredibly supportive with everything our program does and stands for, and always answering the phone anytime that we need him, which is a lot. I quote Chad a lot. So this season, we were 22, 8, and 1. We had four girls get recognized for postseason honors, and two of them are here tonight. So the two that are not here, we had Ella Pierce. She's a middle blocker, a junior, and she got all-conference selection. She's actually at club practice tonight, practicing even more. And then we have Lila Roth, who is a middle blocker turned setter this year. She's a sophomore. She was all-conference and second-team all-district. And then who I have here tonight, this is Brenna Botkin. She's a senior. She's outside hitter and a defensive specialist. And then Kylie Woods, who's also an outside hitter and defensive specialist, and she's a junior. Brenna was all-conference, first-team all-district, and was voted KFMOS Sports Player of the Game. Kylie Woods was also voted all-conference, first-team all-district, and was also a KFMOS Sports Player of the Game. These two girls played all the way around six rotations in every single game this season, so they never came off the floor. Every stat that we have, one of them is probably leading it, and our team would just be absolutely lost without these two girls. So thank you so much, and we are looking forward to a great season next year with most of our squad returning, and you're hoping to see that?
We are now going to celebrate the accomplishments of girls tennis.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Scott Koitzler, and this is the first year that I coached girls, and I'll also be coaching boys tennis this season as well. So I also want to thank Coach Chad Mills because I had plenty of phone calls to him as well, especially being my first year, so he was a valuable asset as well. Our season went pretty well also. We graduated, what, six seniors last year? Yeah, so we graduated six seniors, and most of them were part of our varsity last year, so we had to bring up four of our, six varsity members make up varsity, and we had four new members essentially to our varsity team. Macy Coleman and Dagney McCarver are the two that we'll be honoring this evening for the postseason honors. But our, as a team, we went very, we did very well. We made it to the district championship match, and we lost a really close one late into the evening against Festus. But we did also have individual districts where Macy and Dagney qualified for their doubles tennis. So the two of them got through districts and qualified for state, and they just missed meddling at state in Springfield. And our JV, also I want to mention, they went 12 and 1, so the future is bright for the girls tennis. Macy went 12 and 5 in her singles. Dagney went 9 and 4, and their doubles record was 11 and 4, I believe. And I think, we don't have stats in tennis like they do in volleyball, so I guess we could have counted up all Macy's aces, but that would be a lot, so. Thank you very much.
The final group will be softball.
Hello, I'm Allison Rush, and I'm a varsity softball coach. I want to start off by saying thank you to each of you for your support, not only through the season, but throughout the school year and everything you do as sports. Like everyone else, I have to say thank you to Mr. Mills tonight because we faced a lot of challenges this season, and he handled them all very gracefully and supported us through them all. So we are very appreciative of him for that. We had four girls who received postseason awards this year. Three of them are here with us tonight. Honestly, we're very proud of their hard work and commitment. Like I said, we faced some challenges, being moved up to Class 5, low numbers, things like that, and these girls still put in the work to show up and get these awards at the end of the day. So, starting with first-team all-conference, we had Kyla Knight. We had Andy Hogan and Cameron Kennedy. First-team all-district was Kyla Knight for infield. Second-team all-district was Andy Hogan, Cameron Kennedy, and Gracie Mann. And then second-team all-region was Kyla Knight. We had a lot of positive things to take away from this season. We had a lot of growth for a very young team, which in hindsight, we are actually very excited about being a young team because that means we get all of our girls back next year, and all of our hard work just kind of rolls over with us. This team will be back to work in a few short weeks. Kind of like Coach Baker said, it seems to be almost a year-round thing at this point, whether they're with us, they're on the ballfield with their summer teams. We just thank you again for your support, and we look forward to seeing you next season.
I'll tell you what, the softball group that was just recognized, you know, there were some nights we were down to eight girls. And this group right here showed lots of grit, lots of toughness. Not always very easy. They were able to get some wins with eight or nine girls. And I'll be honest, everybody should be real proud of that operation right there because those circumstances weren't always very easy.
Want to get things for all the patients tonight. So in place of Amanda, I just wanted to make the announcement for the board election coming up and the filing for that. Filing will begin on December 9th at the board office at 8:00 a.m. that morning, and continue to 3:00. And then we will continue filing Monday through Friday on all the days that were open from 8 to 3:00. We will be closed on December 24th, 25th, 26th, and 29th. And we'll resume filing for one final day on December 30th. resume filing for one final day on December 30th. And that day, by law, we are required to file until 5:00. So Amanda Buchanan will be there on that day. We do have three positions that we'll be filing for this term. We did have a slight change to the agenda that Angie will go ahead and introduce our next speaker. So each, each year, Dr. Gilgore from Mineral Area College does an update to the board on how things are going with our partnership with Mineral Area College. We had to shift him a little bit further in the agenda, so he's going to come up because he had a 5:00 obligation, but he made it as quickly as he could. So, welcome, Dr. Gilgore.
A lot of people walked out right as I came in, I decided I'll hesitate that personally. Thank you all for having me again. I am sorry I'm late. We recognize a veteran that was at one of our basketball games and that was at 5:00, so I got here as soon as I could. Just a reminder, yeah, every year, I come in and give you a little update on Mineral Area College as a part of the Mineral Area College Taxing District. Feel it's important that we share with our constituents and a little update on how your students are doing at Mineral Area College this fall. So as far as Matt goes, we have 2,495 students enrolled right now. They have an average GPA of 3.2. Some news that's going on is our volleyball team is headed to the national tournament. They play tomorrow morning in Clarksville, Tennessee. So pretty excited about that. It's tough for, I don't even know much about our region, but it's really hard to get to the national tournament, so it's a great accomplishment for those ladies. We have a massive solar field on campus that you may have seen if you came through. 9,000 solar panels, not quite connected to campus yet, but that's okay because it's not that sunny outside. So it's okay. But they'll be connected soon, so we'll be benefiting from that, saving your tax dollars there that we spending on electric bills, as we all know, those aren't going down anytime soon. Also, our baseball field's getting turfed, so if you come through again, if you saw the solar field, you saw the baseball field is completely torn apart and getting put back together. So it's a really cool project. Our men's basketball team's ranked number 23 in the nation right now. Last I heard, they play tomorrow night. And then a couple of recognitions we've had this year is Mineral Area College was named one of the great colleges to work for in the United States. So every year, this national publication called The Chronicle of Higher Education, which is the newspaper for higher education in the United States, they do a survey of community colleges and universities. And out of 79 total colleges and universities in the United States named great college to work for, Mineral Area College is one of them, one of only 22 community colleges and the only community college in Missouri to be named as a great college to work for. So we're very proud about that. We also got recognized by an institute called the Aspen Institute and they basically gather data and track community colleges and how well they do. We have been named one of the top 200 community colleges in the United States by the Aspen Institute with a chance to be named the top one for a million-dollar prize. So we're working hard to get towards that. It's 2027 is when they announced that. But it's great things happening at Mineral Area College right now. So as far as Farmington students go, the average GPA is a 3.08. You have 450 students right now enrolled at Mineral Area College that went to Farmington High School. I don't know when they went there. I didn't bring you that information, but they put down they went to Farmington High School. And that is 18% of all of our students, the largest of all of our school districts. And then last year, you graduated 34 students with an associate of arts degree at the same time as their high school diploma, which was five more than you had the year before. So just really thank you all for your partnership. We have six school districts in the Mineral Area College Taxing District. It's a pleasure to work with all of you. We get to work with Dr. Gibbs often. It's just a great relationship with the school district and with the college. We really appreciate it. If there's anything that Mineral Area College can do further for the school district, please do not hesitate to reach out. We're happy to help. Unless there's any questions, that's all I've got. All right, thank you. I'm going to come out and shake your hands.
Okay, and the next, our next item, we're going to hear from Amanda Sheets and our principal. So, come on down.
Good evening. Last month, you listened to me report our district data and this month, we're going to listen to our building principals discuss how their data fits into the overall big picture of our data and how they connect that data to academic excellence.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to present the results of the 2025 kindergarten entry assessment that we refer to as the KDA and the kindergarten observation form that we refer to as the KOF. So, we're going to be taking a look at this data for Truman and outline the action steps in our building improvement plan in response to this data. So the KDA is a required statewide assessment tool administered by teachers during the first few weeks of the kindergarten school year. Its primary purpose is to provide a baseline snapshot of a child's school readiness across five essential developmental domains. The data is used to inform instruction, inform families and inform the state as well. As you can see on this first slide, our overall readiness rate for 2025 was 59%. And as you can also see, we are above 2024's state average, which was 57%. So this year's state average is not out yet, but we will definitely be taking a look at that in comparison to where we fell for this year. On the next slide, you will see the kindergarten observation form. So this is the specific tool that we use to collect the observational data for the KDA. And looking at this, we take a look to identify areas of strength as well as areas of growth. So some areas of strength, that would be cognition and general knowledge as well as physical development. Some areas for growth, the KDA data identified areas of need that directly drive our building improvement plan. Our greatest area of growth was that social-emotional development at 56%, which does not come as a surprise, you know, to our pre-K and kindergarten teachers. So this would be an example of participating successfully in large group activities, handling frustration well. So that just indicates a need for explicit self-regulation and group skill in our instruction. Another area that we found as an area of growth is approaches to learning. And so a low KOF score in this would be like staying focused during individual and small group activities as well as following class rules and routines. In comparison, so what we're doing with our building improvement plan response, our BIP action steps are intentionally designed to target these identified strengths and areas of growth. Our first building improvement plan focuses on academic goals. So the KDA gives us a strong foundation to build toward with our end-of-the-year I-ready goals. Our first goal is an ELA. So that SMART goal is to increase reading achievement by 6% on I-ready. So we are utilizing focused tier-one instruction and data-driven small group instruction to specifically target the lower-scoring foundational KOF skills such as letter recognition and rhyming. And we have resources and trainings in place to help support these areas. So if you take a look at this slide and some of those pictures in there, you'll see teachers in small group. You'll see students in stations. That top, right, it depends, I guess, which way we're looking at it. We have a teacher in phonics instruction. Students in small group math instruction in stations. You will see pictures of our pre-K teachers in small group as well. With math, our goal is to increase math achievement by 8% on I-ready. So we are going to leverage our existing strength in cognition readiness through focused tier-one instruction as well and small group work. We have a focus on math this year through our math vertical team and math training. In fact, we held those last week and this week as well. Our teachers are also collaborating weekly on database decision-making to discuss both areas of academics and we look at that through our database decision-making cycle. That includes gathering data, analyzing it, intentionally acting and creating next steps based on that data. Our second building improvement goal is over culture and climate. This goal is our direct response to the lower KDA scores in social-emotional development and approaches to learning. That BIP goal is to decrease office discipline referrals by 5%. We are currently implementing a solid foundation in the classroom using specific conscious discipline techniques and components. So some photos there, you'll see our teachers are using morning slides. Embedded within those morning slides are different components of conscious discipline, which include daily jobs, commitments and safe place. And this just helps create a unified school family. In conclusion, the 2025 KDA data provides clear evidence of where our instructional focus must lie. By tightening and aligning our academic supports with our social-emotional strategies, we are targeting the core needs of our youngest learners to ensure readiness for academic success. Furthermore, we are focused on strengthening the bridge between pre-K and kindergarten to impact readiness before students even enroll. And we also have a nice structure and focus with our early learning committee, which includes community childcare providers. By sharing this data with them as well, we can continue to strive to establish common goals and language across the community to ensure all early learning environments are working toward the same readiness indicators, therefore impacting future KDA scores across the board. Do you guys have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Vandiver is not able to be here this evening, so she prepared what data she was going to share with you all and I'm going to tell you all about Jefferson and their data story. So what you see is the Jefferson data from the MAP 24-25 school year for both ELA and math. The gold is the building average and the black are the state averages. And so Jefferson has consistently met or exceeded the state averages in both math and ELA. Third grade math increased from 23 to 24 and ELA slightly decreased. However, fourth grade had a slight decrease in math and an increase in ELA. So they were just kind of flip-flopping. They were opposite strengths from one year to the next. The cohort data with students showed that students who were third graders in the 23-24 school year had a slight decrease in proficiency in ELA. However, in 24-25 ELA data, those same group of students saw an increase in their math proficiency. So across third grade ELA, we saw strengths when we analyzed our building item analysis data and drawing conclusions, answering multiple choice questions, in-depth knowledge of skills and concepts, so DOK level 2. We did see some weaknesses in the writing process with the technology-enhanced questions in the DOK strategic thinking. We're continually using those MRI or Missouri Reading Initiative strategies to help students with thinking out loud, organizational methods to organize their details in text and in writing, and have a clearer structure for the writing process. Third grade math saw strengths in multiplications and fractions. That's a huge thing to overcome because overall, students generally show those weaknesses in the fraction piece and that carries on from grade level to grade level like the domino effect. So we saw some strengths in those multiplication and fractions. We saw weaknesses in geometry and multi-step word problems. Again, we're using those math strategies to practice fluency and to incorporate that in our everyday teaching. Fourth grade ELA saw strengths in drawing conclusion, multiple choice questions and depth and knowledge of skills and concepts. And they saw weaknesses with the writing prompts. So fourth grade and eighth grade have a writing prompt in addition to the multiple choice and/or constructed or response questions. Fourth grade math had strengths in reading and fractions and their weaknesses were with those multi-step word problems. So again, they're using those Missouri Reading Initiative strategies as well as practicing the idea of building thinking classrooms and that math framework in their everyday lessons. In response to their academic goals and for their building improvement plan, Jefferson has two goals. So in ELA, at the end of last year, 63% of students were mid or above grade level in ELA and the goal was to increase to 70%. So far, they were up 7%. Math at the end of last year was 58% mid or above grade level and the goal was to increase to 65%. So based on the district action plan, goal 1.2, which is student engagement in their building goal that's focused on effective tier-one instruction, they want to have a focus on frequent activities to incorporate student accountable talks. So where students are talking to other students and collaborating about their thinking and learning. They want to also focus on intentional quality lesson planning, utilizing the DESI items specification documents to help teachers align lessons. So the pictures that you see are the response to the academic data. Students are setting goals with their I-ready lessons. Students are being able to interact with a learning target every day and so that learning target helps them to know where they're at and where they're going. And the other pictures are students using those Missouri Reading Initiative strategies at Jefferson. Are there any questions you might have for Jefferson's data?
Okay, so for Roosevelt Elementary, looking at third and fourth grade map scores, we were above the state average in third and fourth grade in both ELA and math. Areas of improvement for us would be increasing the cohort data from third to fourth grade in ELA and to continue to push for larger increases in growth just across the board. So our pictures show our next steps and celebrations for Roosevelt Elementary. The top two pictures show examples of a must-do, may-do list and learning stations. So students are engaged in purposeful activities while the teacher pulls students for small group instruction. Next, we have a picture of our MRI facilitator modeling the Great Reader Strategy lesson in a second grade classroom. We now have three grade levels that participate in collaboration, coaching and modeling through MRI. Ms. Matisson's classroom is showing how they use whiteboards. The use of whiteboards is one of the many student engagement strategies that are utilized in the classroom while it also serves as a formative assessment tool to capture student understanding. The bottom-left picture shows Ms. Ruck's classroom using a number sense routine with a turn-and-talk engagement strategy. The bottom-right picture shows our first grade winning class for our October attendance incentive. We do this just because there is a strong correlation between student attendance and overall student success. Overall, these pictures represent our building's focus on tier-one instruction through the district's instructional models, strengthening ELA curriculum and instruction through participation in the Missouri Reading Initiative, increasing student engagement in the classroom as a district-wide focus, and then also supporting building-wide attendance. Any questions for Roosevelt? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to share our information for Washington Franklin in regards to our data. As you can see with our map scores from last year for ELA as well as math for both third and fourth grade, we were able to be above the state average. Our ELA is above by 14 to 15 points. We're in the upper 50s and 60s for having advanced and proficient student scores on that math test. Our math is a little bit lower as far as achievement and not quite as big of a gap between the state, but we still are above that state average across the board, 6 to 4 above the state average. So super proud of that, that they were able to achieve that. So math is definitely a growth area for us. And of course, our goal is to continue to increase that. Our next slide kind of shows our cohort data with our students. Our ELA had an increase with, from our third to fourth grade, our math had a little bit of a decrease. This year, hopefully, we are focusing as a district on that math instruction, so our math instructional model. Today, actually, I was with a group of teachers who were at our math academy. So I'm learning how to incorporate all the different components of math on a daily basis with your students with your lesson, which will hopefully help us to increase and bump that math score back up. We also had some newer teachers in our math grade, in our math last year. So we're excited to see those teachers grow in their second year of teaching as well. Some of our things that we're doing to help work on that strength is our collaboration. Like I said, we have some newer staff in our building who are in their second or third year of teaching. So really working on that collaboration piece with the teachers and focusing monthly. They have specific collaboration each week that either focuses on academics, behavior or attendance, and then lesson planning as well. So as a team, they're working together and can pull those strengths from the veteran teachers. but also bringing the new ideas from the new teachers as well. They're focusing on that tier-one instruction, as the other two ladies had said, working with our MRI and our letters, our training with that, working those instructional models in both ELA and math. And that's what some of our pictures that we provided show. We have some goal setting in that top-left corner there. That was actually students setting their own goals with their writing for that day using those MRI strategies. A picture down at the bottom there of some small group instruction where the students are working on highlighting certain words and math problems to help them figure out their answers and describe their thinking. The middle pictures there show that student engagement, which of course is our district focus with the standard 1.2. In a math class there, that's a second grade math class, they were using Skittles to make arrays to help them demonstrate and show numbers and putting numbers together. The other picture there is another MRI strategy, them using their writing journals and their reading journals as they're working through that process of summarizing and telling stories from the books that they have read in the whole group reading. The side, the two over on the right side, show our math centers in one of our classrooms, and that's when that teacher can have that intentional focused small group lesson with students who need a little extra reteaching. But then those centers that they do or stations that they do are focused on those skills that they're learning so that they can continue to scaffold those skills and show growth in that area. And then down at the bottom is some more goal tracking, but also peer-to-peer goal tracking together and holding each other accountable for their goals that they're setting for themselves with their reading. We are also continuing to rethink kind of our tier-one instruction, making sure that that's an extension of our tier-one instruction. So we've kind of reworked how we do our response to intervention this year as well, which is shown to be successful. Teachers are feeling a little more confident in their tier-one instruction because they have a little more time to prepare that. Any questions for Washington Franklin in regards to our data? Thank you very much.
Good evening. I feel a little less prepared, but because I did bring notes, but I have everything that I need to tell you, I believe. I'm here going over Lincoln's data. If you look at the data that we got right there, the gold is Lincoln, the black is the state average, consistently above everything except for fifth grade math. We're above the state averages on everything. Fifth grade math has historically, the last couple of years, been a little bit of a lower score. So what we did last year, or this coming year, we looked at exactly where, what are the areas that we're looking at, and we are lacking in multiplication and division, fractions, and decimeters. And so that is a focus for us this year. And it is something that the students struggle with. There's a lot of components that go into that. So that's something that we've been working with our instructional coaches on, Mrs. Paul's for that. And also along with the district as far as our math initiative with our math PD and everything, utilizing thinking classrooms and everything to kind of help us with that, support that. The other areas that we have there are all above the state averages, you can see. However, the growth isn't exactly what we'd like to see. If you look at our cohort data, you can see our ELA has grown just a little bit. Now, in sixth grade, the bar to the right is our sixth grade math compared to fifth grade, so we are able to make up some of that gap there. But overall, we aren't seeing the growth that we like to see. So what we've done this year is I've taken the math data that we received last year and actually drilled down and looked at the students that were within 15 points of proficient in either math or ELA, and we've identified those students. And what we're looking at in each area is right around 45 to 50 students that fall into that category. And so what we've done is I've actually given those names to the teachers of those students that are within 15 points of proficient, and asked them to identify those students, know who those students are, and look at those students we need to move to proficient. So that way, we can put a face with the numbers. So just saying, I want to, because our BIB goal, our first building improvement plan goal, is to move math and ELA both 7%. So if you're looking at that, 7% out of 300 students is 21 students. So in all reality, I only need to move 21 students to increase our scores by 7%. So if I identify, if I identify the 45 or 50 students that actually need to move, now we're giving them a face to know who it is that we need to make that connection with that we need to actually help and move. So my, our hope is, by specifically identifying these students, we're able to support them individually to help close that gap that we need to close and move not only math, but all of our data, those seven percentage points. So the pictures that you're looking at here are examples in our classrooms of student engagement. We have students up moving around, as you can see in the lower right-hand corner. In the middle at the bottom, we have students actively engaging in different activities and everything. Specifically on math, in the lower left-hand corner, we have math talk moves, which is what we're asking students to do is think about their learning. Like, what do I know? What do I don't know? Where do I, where can I go from that? So we're asking students to be reflective on where they're at and where they're going. Our hope is that allows them to make connections and to make that actual movement. If you look in the middle on the right at the bottom, that's, we do a lot of small group instruction and everything, and then, pardon me. And then in this case, the teacher, Ms. Ahold there, actually has next to her the learning target. So the students, while they're in small group with her, they can reference back to what am I here for? What am I supposed to be learning at this exact moment? And so by doing things like this, being more intentional with our instruction and everything, we're able to hopefully close those gaps, be more impactful and effective with the different strategies that we're using. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Here to talk about the middle school. As you can see from the graph, we are above the state average in seventh grade ELA, seventh grade math, eighth grade ELA, Algebra I, and eighth grade science. So of all the tested subjects that we have, eighth grade math is the only one that we are not above the state average, and that has been pretty consistent. Those are pretty consistent with the ones that are above and the ones that are not. As we talked about before, you can see, if you look at Algebra I, that's, you know, 100% is as high as it goes. And so our Algebra I students perform at 95% in advanced and proficient. So what that correlates to is if you look at the eighth grade math, one of the reasons why that is down is because a portion of those students are in that Algebra I. So not all of our eighth grade students are represented in eighth grade math. The ones that take, are eighth grade students that take Algebra I, that's where you're seeing that, and they are highly successful. That is the highest percentage that it has been at the middle school since I've been here in the last nine years. I know the last two years, we have been over 90%. And so whenever you're looking at about 100 students that are taking a high school class, taking a high, for a high school credit and actually taking the EOC, they're not actually taking the math test, you're talking about only one to two students in that, in that class that is not reaching advanced and proficient. So right now, math, eighth grade math is continually going to be down, so we're working on that. And we'll talk about some next steps here in a second. So but consistently, we are over the state average in all of our tested areas. Our cohort data, as you can see in ELA, we have an increase from seventh to eighth grade. So that's always what you're looking for, is to see those students to continue to grow. Like I said, our seventh to eighth grade math is going to show that dip because it does not reflect our, basically, our top 100 high-achieving students. So eighth grade integrated algebra is what they take. So that's something that we're continuing to work on. Mrs. Paul's is very, one of our instructional coaches, is heavily involved. And through our vertical work, we're implementing professional development called Building Thinking Classrooms, and that is something that we're giving support. So you're going to hear a lot of those same common themes. ELA has had MRI, the Missouri Reading Initiative, and math really hasn't had a strong PD to support them. So we're super excited with this Building Thinking Classrooms that is going to work on increasing student engagement and work on trying to increase that integrated algebra, you know, a little bit each year. So that's, that's the reason why our eighth grade math cohort data is, is below. Some of our action steps are always going to be to utilize MRI strategies. Those are, have been in our ELA for the last three years. We are excited this year. We got to expand that to our social studies department because our social studies reads so much with their primary source documents and a lot of the things that they do. We've increased that to professional development to our librarian and our health teacher. We were trying to be targeted in other areas besides ELA that incorporate a lot of reading in their content. So it's not just ELA teachers now. We're expanding that out, and those strategies are now being used in multiple classrooms. So you can see from the pictures, you're going to hopefully see a pretty common theme. They're either hopefully implementing an MRI strategy. Like in the top-left, they're using their reading response journals. The top-right, they're using their reading response journals. In the middle, you see the grid, that would be an example of Building Thinking Classrooms. We're trying to increase student engagement, as you've heard from the other buildings. If students are engaged, we hope to see, you know, an increase in our academic success. So all the pictures that are represented there hopefully show student engagement, or you're going to see a teacher that has a small group pulled towards them because being intentional about using that data for students who aren't performing where we want them to and being able to pull them, give them extra time, give them extra resource and availability to the teacher to hopefully to be able to improve academics. So each one of those pictures represents one of those areas. Our building improvement plan is similar to Lincoln. Mr. Hall and I kind of collaborated on that, and we are also identifying what we call bubble students. We have identified students in math and ELA that are 15 points away from moving to that proficient category. And that's where we feel like we will get the most bang for our buck instead of just setting a building-wide goal of moving the whole building 3%. Well, 3% of what? So we want to focus on the students that were basic and that were, that's an attainable goal for them. So that is also our building improvement plan. It is broken down by each team. We have two seventh grade teams, two eighth grade teams. Our intervention teachers know by name who those students are that they need to target. And again, the more that you can be intentional, we hope the more that we can see academic growth. So it's nice to be able to vertically align with MRI, vertically align with a lot of our math things. And I know Mrs. Lamond's is able to implement MRI as well. So hopefully, we're just continuing to see that steady growth as the kids move, you know, from each building and each grade level. So any questions for us at the middle school? Thank you.
All right, Farmington's data, the high school. We are above the state average in all areas, which we are very, very, very thankful for. But our big focus this year is biology because honestly, the state average is not awesome. And so we would like to rise above that, and that is a continued area of focus for us. This year, biology specifically has been working in their collaborative teams to align things in their classroom on a daily basis. A big struggle for biology and even government is charts and graphs and being able to interpret that data. So that is something that they are incorporating into daily lessons in the classroom instead of just looking at what they need to do to prepare for the EOC. They're looking at what they can do on a daily basis to improve those strategies. And the biology department has already worked with Dr. Northern specifically on goals for them as individual teachers on what they are going to do and breaking down their data and seeing what they can do to own that and make improvements in their classrooms, so being very much more intentional in their collaboration. Our big celebration this year is our government scores. They've increased about roughly 15%. And they really took a lot of ownership in what they were doing last year, making sure that they were creating a positive testing environment, really looking at the skills involved in their standards and not just their content. So we're very thankful for social studies for kind of taking, being brave and taking a bigger look at that, and they continue to do that this year. And not to not celebrate the other areas, but what we like to focus on is the fact that, yes, it looks good, we're above the state average, but we're not showing much growth. And so we really, really, in our BIB this year, have focused on tier-one instruction. And at FHS, we, we actually are not looking at just at the teacher level. We, as a building-level administrative team, decided to kind of dig into us as instructional leaders in the building as well. And we've been working very closely with our DCI consultant to see what we can do to lead the high school with better instructional leadership and focusing on that tier-one instruction. And so our PD this year has been very intentional on framing our focus and making sure that we're actually providing the tools for the teachers that they need to improve their instruction and not just telling them to get better, but actually working alongside of them to make that happen. And a part of that, within our BIB, our practices are to focus on tier-one instruction, not limited to collaborating with professionals, but to increase student success using student assessment data and analyzing instructional practices, making necessary adjustments to improve student outcomes and using effective teaching and learning strategies, which is our big focus this year. Using explicit, high-impact instructional strategies, big focus for this year has been disciplinary literacy. We are blessed to have MRI training. We have not had that like the K8 has, and our teachers have embraced that. And we are really looking forward to this summer extending that even more and into our other content areas because biology, government, ELA essentially can really lean to be more of a reading test. And if students struggle in reading, and I suspect that's going to get better with the reading support plans that are placed in lower levels, but we've got to focus on reading and the fact that students struggle with vocabulary and comprehension. And so by using MRI strategies in all content areas, we're going to see some great improvement there and with the disciplinary literacy focus. And then, of course, in our math department, the Building Thinking Classrooms, it has been refreshing to see a little, a little more action in classrooms and kids up and moving and then doing some stronger things in the math classrooms. And we do have two teachers that are also attending ASPIRE training, which is, those are two ELA teachers that have volunteered their time, and it's like a course load to break down those vocabulary strategies. And then we are asking them to push out into their collaboration and eventually other departments to teach all teachers those strategies because reading and vocabulary comprehension are not an ELA focus. They are for all teachers to focus on. And then another push within our BIB is that database decision-making, not just looking at CFAs and summatives, but that daily instruction and the data that you can gather daily to guide your teaching. So the example up on the slide at the very bottom-left corner is the government classroom gave a quick little formative check on where the students were and, and, and the government teachers can look at that, and all of our teachers kind of do this, where they look at exactly where the students are with the assessment that was just given with the formative check. And then they can totally guide their teaching, and also that's how they can determine their groups if they want to do some intentional small groups and possibly stations. And stations will definitely be our next steps. The other pictures you see are MRI strategies already in place, even though our ELA teachers have only been to one training. Those reading journals have been a big focus, and our students seem to be really excited about them, and they really, really get involved in that. And then you have small groups in other classrooms. And listening to students have these conversations as I walk into classrooms has been very refreshing because I'm seeing students moving and learning and engaged, and that has been a huge focus for this year. Any questions for FHS?
Okay, so we're moving down into our informational items. And does anyone have any questions for Crystal about our monthly financial report? Anyone? Okay, so we're going to move down. Dr. Gibbs has some information for us pertaining to our levy transfer.
All right, so it's been, been a bit of a journey the last few months since the election. And over the summer, presented both options, bond and levy. And then the last board meeting, we're looking at the really drilled-down bond issuance project list for whenever that goes forward. And so the flip side of that is to look at the levy transfer this month. And then Carrie and I were able to sit down with the information that Crystal so thoroughly provided and really look through that. And so I took the document that was shared in the board packet and just created some slides that kind of created a little more conciseness to the information. So just looking at where we are currently, the 90 cent debt service levy has been established for several years, and it really kind of carried us through those times when we had two major bond issues on the ballot. And we were able to do some improvements like the field house, a lot of things here at Truman with the auditorium and the, weaning for the pre-K, the safety entries throughout the district. So we definitely needed it at the time, and then we thought we would need it for the potential of a large issue in 2024 with the potential of a middle school, but we moved away from that. And then last year's bond issue with the idea of the performing arts. And at this point, kind of tabled that. But overall, our debt has definitely decreased because those two measures have been kind of pushed out. And then also, excess valuation has increased over the last few years. So we've had, and we've made the prepayments the last three years in a row and really driven down that debt. And since we're moving away from the major project at this time, after listening to our voters at the last election, we feel like the 90 cents is really not something that is needed at this time and not in the foreseeable future. So the other option, as was presented through the summer and then talked about with the admin team and our executive team, and then most recently, the steering committee on November 7th. Carrie and I talked about it as well at length, is to transfer at least 30 cents from the debt service levy. LJ Hart had ran some numbers, 30 cents, 35 cents, but we just feel like kind of a safe number for us is 30 cents and then keep the 60 cents on the debt service side. It's still allow us to do at least a $25 million bond issue and cover most of those projects. allow us to do at least a $25 million bond issue and cover most of those projects that I highlighted for you at the last board meeting. And so that levy transfer would generate one, over $1.6 million. So gets us close to the goal of the levy increase that we proposed last year. And if you look at why that really makes sense for us, we're still operating at that state minimum. So we've moved into another year where our reserves are carrying us, but deficit spending is not where we want to stay. And when we asked the taxpayers for the increase, we got close. We just needed 50%. We were at 48, but this is a no increase. This just keeps the 365 the same, just redistributes the money between the two levies differently. So hopefully, we'd have a more favorable outcome and we could get beyond that 2% to close that gap and go ahead and get that across the finish line without any increase overall to the taxpayers. And then we, we've been looking, you know, Carrie and I talked about this quite at length, of just being able to achieve those annual financial goals more easily because that, that 30 cents would move into the operating fund instead of being pushed into debt service and funding every project through our, our bond issues. And we'll still reserve that 60 cent bond issue for those long-range critical projects that we identified last month. And then a, a good thing for this election, after kind of the situation we had, is we only need a simple majority with the bond issue. We would need 4/7, 57%. So we just need the 50%. We were close on that. So it's a simpler message, just marketing one issue instead of trying to communicate the 20 bond issue projects you saw on the list last month. And the passage of the transfer would hopefully create some momentum, kind of wipe out the situation we had in April and we could move forward with the bond issue after that because they do both need to be on the ballot at some point. We just had to kind of decide which succession to put them in. And then where does the levy transfer get us is what the next slide shows. And it reduces the deficit spending. We've had a situation where we've been saving money by looking at programming, doing audits, identifying staffing areas where we can save. But we, we're kind of leveling out there and we want to maintain those levels so that that would help us. Competitive pay was a big issue last time that we marketed. We need to continue to work on that, close the gap. The gap got a little bit larger because we just couldn't do the races after the levy increase didn't pass. And then also doing capital improvement projects along the way, which we tackled more recently with the buses. We, we just got in recently, the roof over next door at Washington Franklin, they, the playground upgrade. So we don't want to, we don't want to continue to do all of those on bond issues because those are things we could use, you know, a million dollars a year that's generated here to do some of those smaller projects and go ahead and get those checked off and not be financing all of those. And so if you flip to the last page, it just shows us taking those projects that are presented last month, we'll be able to eventually in an election soon to follow or a year from April, if we decide to wait that long, we could go sooner to ask for that 60 cent to be extended after we've got some momentum from levy transfer and go ahead and tackle those projects and really get us into a proactive maintenance status. Those projects that are mainly on the list with the exception of two or three are mainly just to kind of catch us up and get us in a good place moving forward. And then that levy transfer, being able to move money each year over to capital improvements would set us up for just keeping a better maintenance and then doing our 60 cent bond issue every, every so often when we see major needs that we have. So questions about that? I feel like that's my recommendation of, and Carrie and I, after meeting, are feel, feel that that's where we should go in the upcoming election, but we do need to be moving in that direction. There's no action until we have a ballot measure, which LJ Hart would help us draft over the next month and I would have that ready for you at the December board meeting. So questions or do consensus on if that's the direction we need to go or we can also discuss it further as we move out of closed session back into open session, if that's what you would like to do. So questions for me? Anything to add, Carrie?
I think you summarized the objective is to realize how we utilize the resources moving into operations. We have access to the funding that you need to maintain operations to help us, you know, break, break an increase to our, our wage scales, to retain staff and to recruit new staff. So I do think that's a big plus for us.
Anyone else? All right, and we can discuss that further if we need to. So by next month, we should have some ballot language and be moving in that direction if that's where we're going. So thank you.
All right, if you look at the policy updates, we have some policies that are going to begin a 30-day review. So I direct your attention to that to prepare for a vote next board meeting. And then we'll move to discussion and action items and the consensual agenda. Look at those items. Anyone have questions or discussion?
One question for Crystal about the all of their things for good and the all of the time, no issue with the balance and the profit.
Good job, good job. All right, if no, if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion and a second and a vote. All those in favor? Okay. And we're moving into the superintendent update.
Fly through this tonight, there's been a lot of good information and so information overload a little bit. But as we reflect back on this past month, so many great things happened across our district, I always love to look at this and just be able to celebrate. But first up, Black Knight Insight was held on November 5th. I had a conference out of the area, but focused on technology and operations and Angie's going to share just a little bit of her experience because she was able to be part of that that day. So go ahead.
I had so much fun. It was great. I got to sit down with a seventh grader and I taught seventh and eighth grade and so it felt like home and we had so much fun identifying the difference between what was real and what was AI. And we moved on to the high school and it was, we saw every corner where you don't normally get to go and interacted with students. And I still have a little burn on my hand from serving lunch, but it was worth it and it was fabulous. And everyone was impressed, everyone in the group was engaged. It was, it was a, it's a great idea and it was a great day.
Thank you so much for all of you for participating in that. We've, we've definitely enjoyed that. So next bullet point is that we are currently in the middle of our climate and culture survey. We're wrapping up the parent side of that. We did the staff one on November 7th during the PD day. We're launching the student one. And as an executive team today, we looked at the data and saw a lot of growth across the board, so we're excited about that. So we'll be continuing to share that out and that we are moving in the right direction on that piece of our data for the district. And then as I already covered the bond issue and the third bullet point and then I've been sharing out a lot of updates because finance has been such a big topic this year because after 20 years, Missouri decided to redo the foundation formula and how our state funding is distributed. And so that's being interesting to watch and would make it very, even that much more important that we hit this levy transfer through to give us the stability as we move forward through kind of that unsure time of, of how that's all going to work out for each individual school with the state funding level. And then just want to report our self-funding insurance programs had a lot of stability this year, so we're thankful for that. We'll be having a review meeting coming up soon. Annual performance scores are out. We have increased slightly over last year. We're going to continue to dig into that data and be discussing it at our upcoming professional growth community meeting. And then always a highlight for our district is the annual retiree luncheon that was held on Friday and Tika stepped in and did a great job helping host that along with our high school staff and students, Ms. Harris and their students, the forelayers performed. So just a great day to recognize those people. I'm very excited about the changes we've seen in our attendance data this year, up over two points from where we were this time last year and just a lot of hard work to improve attendance there. And then just want to highlight a few things going on across the buildings, not getting into the specifics, but very successful parent-teacher conferences with good attendance. So that partnership between our staff and the parents to make sure that we support the kids in all the ways possible. Many family involvement events continuing to go on through fall festivals and into the holiday season. We'll have concerts starting up here. Veterans Day was just filled me with such pride as I moved across the district to see all of the things that were going on, the great breakfast that we offered through the food service department, the band performing and each individual school putting on performance and our students being involved downtown in the ceremonies, really being the majority of the ceremony downtown was put on by our students and just a great recognition of our veterans. And then you've heard all of the strong academic emphasis that, and you saw the pictures of what's going on in our classroom. So couldn't be prouder of the work going on across the district. So thank you.
Okay, so we are ready to move into closed session and I would entertain a motion to do that very thing. Thank you. Second. Roll call. Thank you all for coming and thank all the principals for your hard work in relating all the information. We really appreciate that.